And would you call the roll?
Member Kane.
Here.
Vice Chair Unika.
Yep.
Member Streznik Dean.
Here.
Chair Lantis.
Here.
Member Elmer.
Here.
Member Crowley.
Here.
All right, next on the agenda is the consent agenda, and we have two items. July 27th, 2023, special meeting minutes and the August 9th, 2023, regular meeting minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Is there a second? There is a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. The regular agenda, first, a couple of announcements. Number one, public comments, persons wishing to address the planning commission regarding items on the agenda. Regarding items, persons who wish to address the planning commission on items not on the agenda. Speakers will be limited to three minutes. Any presentation for this for informational purposes only, no action will be taken. I think there's a typo in your agenda. Declaration, at this time, I would like to ask the planning commission members to make a declaration of any conflict of interest or of any ex parte or outside communication that might influence their ability to hear all sides on any item on the agenda so that they might come to a fair decision. Hearing done, we'll move on to new business. We've got a couple of public hearings tonight. Would our planning director like to speak to this before we start, or would you, shall we just open the first public hearing?
I think you can open the public hearing.
All right. First item of business is rezonate 1426 East Wilson, Northeast Village, Richmond Circle Partnership, Randy Willbanks, and I will open the public hearing and ask staff to speak to this.
At the... You've got the zoning, at your study session, which of course was recorded and is online, we presented this... Start with the rezoning, yeah. The rezoning of the property, 3.6 acres of 1426 East Wilson from C2 to R2. Discussion of that. We have been at work since the study session and have been engaged with our planning consultant. Unfortunately, we don't have findings to present. And so we are not going to... Staff is not presenting findings, and so it's up to you what you do with that. But staff does not have our opinion to take action. Would the... Let's talk about the... Yeah, there's a couple of options. So, one option would be, we've had an open public hearing, and we could, I said we, you could continue that until a next meeting. In order to, all of the noticing has been done for this public hearing, and so if you just continue it, leave it open, it preserves your ability to make decisions on this matter if you had another meeting. That would be to remain with the R3 zoning, or if that was a desired outcome, to stay in R3. Internally and our planning consultant, I think is... Would probably, would recommend, would like to have findings to support this, having, moving an R2 zoning with a condition permit. My understanding is the developer is, who's here with us tonight, of course, is amenable to that. It accomplishes, the project is accomplish- accomplishable then as well. If... If the sense is, yeah, that might be a good way to go, or that would be a thing of course you would like to make a decision in the future, we would, we could publish notice of that and have a hearing, and you would recommend converting your October study session to a public meeting, to have that hearing. And if that has to do with our noticing requirements, that we don't have time to notice for the October hearing, we have time to notice for the October study session. Is that clear, bud?
No.
The question I have is if public notice has already been sent out.
Sent.
And there's no one here, and if the staff is unprepared, I'm not sure why we would need, why we wouldn't, why we would still need the public to know. There's no one here anyway.
Why we'd need to continue the public hearing.
Why we'd need to continue it.
Am I remembering from our study session that we could go, we could, we could decide to go from R3 to R2 without having an additional notice?
But with a conditional.
Right.
That is a question to debate, and I would say that our consultant is not convinced.
So we would, if we wanted to do that, we would have to have an additional public hearing, is what you're saying?
Or additional time to discuss. So you could leave this open, continue that discussion at your next regular meeting.
And your one, just to the October decision.
I disagree. I disagree. Because if you're saying that we, in order to do an R2 with conditional use, that we must republish. That's, that's the way it was presented, then we would have to do, we would have to call another public hearing at a later meeting, as opposed to hearing the public comments, of which it looks like there will be none, with proper notice, there are, there's no one here to oppose it. It's then in our discussion deciding that we wanted to, and I don't know whether the correct term is downzone or upzone, but go from the recommended, or the requested R3 to, we would recommend to the city that they rezone as R2, and that way the project, if the project goes forward, could be accomplished using a conditional use permit.
I understand what you're saying, and I think you're accurate. The public hearing itself is a standalone item. The discussion and the determination as to whether it remains an R3 or an R2 as being approved as a rezon, are other, are just items on the agenda. They don't have to be tied to an additional public hearing. Is that what you're saying?
That's right, we can close the public hearing, there's no reason to keep the public hearing open. If we don't have findings.
But I have a question. If, if it was published as an R3, and we're changing the zoning, potentially changing it to an R2, wouldn't you think that we would need to republish since the zoning now has, it's even a different type of zoning?
The argument is that it's a lesser.
It's the other way around, I would think.
Yeah. If we were to go up to R, from R, if we published as R2 and were to go to R3, then I absolutely agree with you.
Right, okay.
Because we're going to a lesser zoning, I don't think we need to do that.
Right. So then my question, if I can ask...
I'll call on you here in just a minute. I'll call on you in just a minute.
Well, if, if we delay any type of decision, how does that affect the developer and his, I thought I heard that you had like a grant or something, that, how does that come into play?
Just, let's get the, let's, let us get the technical stuff out of the way. No, 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 you're fine.
We have an answer for you on that as well. It's not specific to this, but there are other items that have to be discussed, and public hearings continued, or additional public hearings held before a decision can be made at all, before they can move ahead with the project. So the rezoning is only one item that's in front of you.
Right.
Should you decide to go to a lesser, a less dense residential zoning, then you would also need a conditional use permit application, which we do have to call a public hearing.
The conditional use permit.
That would already be at a future meeting. In addition to, on your agenda tonight, you'll have a public hearing for the PUD, the planning unit development, and that has some open items that have not been completed yet, so that is also something that needs to be continued to your next meeting as well. Since we have opened, or we published the public hearing, those, that's why we're, we're saying it would be much cleaner to do it all at one time, and the rezoning is only one piece of the whole.
Understood.
But if we're putting this off, to rezone it at the next meeting, and then we decide we want a conditional use permit, then we're going to another meeting for the conditional use permit?
If you were to, the recommendation will not be approval of a rezoning of the R3, of an R3 district. The recommendation will be an R2 with a conditional use permit. This project does not fit within an R2 without conditional use.
Okay.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is if we're putting it off, if we're not, if we're not taking any action tonight, and we put it off, and then at the next meeting, we decide, if it is decided that we want to do an R2 with the conditional, you just said now we have to give more notice, and the developers put off even longer for the conditional use permit.
Yeah, we've worked to, we, the intention would be to work to do it in the correct order in the meeting.
So we wouldn't have to have three meetings, it would just still be two?
Two.
But you just said you'd need to send out more notice.
We do.
But that's for the conditional use permit.
If we're going to R2.
If we go to R2. Well, here, here's my thought on it. There's, we, we are, we know that we've sent out proper notice to the people affected, and the people that our regulations require us to send notice to. We know that to be a fact. There's no one here to oppose or to make comment, except for the developer. If we allow the developer to make their comments and get them into the record, then we can close the public hearing. There's no reason to keep the public hearing open. We're obviously, I mean, to me, I can't make a, I can't make a decision tonight because I don't have the findings of the staff. But we could at least clean it up a little bit and just have the meeting and not have to do a public hearing.
Yeah, I agree. I'm saying, I'm saying same thing.
To me, that's the way to, that's the way to move forward, is to, okay, now, would you like to state your name and give us your comments? State your name and why you're here and...
James Douglas Bohi. I'm here as a representative of the developing group, and my comments are, we continue to want to work within the constructive guidance of the city staff. I am concerned, and I think you guys just addressed it, if we get back into this republishing and not being able to get in to an October meeting but get pushed to November, that creates an economic hardship that I, I would at least object to. I can't, I can't force anybody, but we came with the expectation that we would be acted upon tonight, and I was at the study session with you all a couple of weeks ago, and, and you talked R3, R2, and conditional use, and I thought that you guys had come to a consensus, but I recognized after talking with Lucas today that the third-party guidance group has some, some additional input. I don't know what their concern is between R3 and R2 conditional use, because we agreed at that study session that we would be held to a planned unit development set of guidelines with architectural, landscape, that type thing. So, anyway, I, we're going to cooperate, but I'm asking the body to please try to keep the path, the timeline as short as you can, since we are being pushed back.
That's understood.
And that's basically all I have to say. But I will be available for questions.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak at the public hearing?
When are you planning on the next public hearing?
Well, let's, let's, is there anybody else that wishes to speak to this public hearing? If not, we'll close the public hearing, and now we'll have, now we'll have more discussions. So go ahead, Brian.
Well, when are we pushing the public hearing for the...
Different public hearing, this is a different. We're now talking about the zoning. If, if we approve the zoning at some point, then if we approve it at this one, we won't have to have another public hearing, if we approve it at R3.
At R3.
If we, if we, if our recommendation to the city commission is R2, they'll have to apply for a conditional use permit, and then we'll have to publish and have another public hearing, which staff is saying we could have at our October study session, but that's the third Thursday in October, and then it would go to the city commission when after that. Assuming we would recommend...
Early November.
So see, that's going to be early November.
Right. That's my guess.
It would have been early November anyway.
With an R2.
All right.
Because you still have, you still have the other items that are pending, so even if you approved it at an R, at an R3, the PUD is not ready to go. So it has to be extended to the next meeting anyway. It's not ready for recommendation. We have, a traffic study has not been conducted, there's been no, there's some other items that need to be addressed for the PUD.
Does the PUD need a public hearing?
It does.
Okay, the PUD itself needs a public hearing, okay.
Yes, it does. So regardless of whether you do, we can, we would continue that one to your next regular meeting in October, but if we decided to go with conditional use permit, we would ask that those, would those be pushed back to your study session and convert that to a special meeting? We talked about the calendar today and the best way to get them all done at the same time so that we can package it up nicely for them to be able to use ahead as quickly as they could.
So if I'm hearing you right, if you gave notice, we could, we could do everything at our next meeting?
Next study session.
Study session.
In October. Not the one in September, the one in October.
If we decided to go with an R2 and a conditional use permit, we could, that could all be done at the next study session?
The October study session. We have a study session in September.
Why not at the next regular study?
Publication, Taran.
So publication takes 20 day, you have to publish with 20 days. That falls at later in a week. The Ottawa Herald publishes only on Wednesdays, and they require that we get the notice to them by noon today, if we were going to do it. So it, that wasn't anticipated.
So we're being faulted for lax communication because our paper only publishes twice a week?
Once a week.
Once a week. Once a week on Wednesdays, and we're required to submit by the previous Wednesday.
Is there any value in setting a special meeting?
Well, that's why we were talking about using your study session time in October as a special meeting. We could move that up, but I think it would be about one week's timeframe.
So wouldn't it make enough of a difference?
I don't know that you would get a whole lot more time in there, but...
What are the dates of the city commission meetings in October?
In October? For what reason in October?
We have two city, we have two regularly scheduled city commission meetings in October. What are those dates?
The fourth and the 18th.
The fourth and, okay.
So neither one of those were going to be accomplished by having the public hearing, because those items have to go to the city commission on two Mondays, at least two Mondays before the regular meeting. They would have been on the 23rd, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, let me back up, this is no use of October. So it would have been, it could have been the 16th, the 23rd, or the 30th, but the first available city commission meeting in November is the first. So the next regular meeting of the city commission would have been November 1st, that it could have been heard.
I do have another question, kind of hypothetical, but kind of sorta on this topic. Do, are we required to... What are we required to have in front of us to make this type of decision?
I think there's, there's that question, and then...
Are we required to have the findings?
There's that question, and then there's also what is necessary in order to take more decision and, and explain it to the city commission?
Historically, I mean, going to speak to this historically, after you close a public hearing, there's, you have discussion, and there's two motions that are made. First motion is to accept the findings of the staff as ours, or modify and approve those findings. Then once the findings are approved, one way or the other, or, or deny the findings, and, and then we don't have to have the second motion. But then the second motion would be to forward to the city commission for their approval, for their rec, for our rec, our recommendation would be that for them to approve or disapprove the project based on what we had in our findings. So there's two motions that are required. One deals with the findings, and then the other one deals with moving it forward to the city commission. Don't know how we can do moving it forward without findings.
And I'm assuming that the, what information we have is not exactly the same as what we were presented in our study session.
So I think it's relatively the same. However, our consultant wanted to verify that in fact you can downzone, that the recommendation to go from the application for R3 to R2 is applicable, and because it's currently zoned as commercial. If you remember, a few months ago, we had a similar situation with another property where they applied for an R3, but it was previously already residential. So the question is, would you going from commercial to residential, does that make it different? And that's what they wanted to confirm, and did not have time to do so.
Isn't that a statutory question? And if it is, why can't our city attorney rule on that? Why do we have to have our planning consultant rule on that?
We can ask our city attorney.
I think we, that's, that's water under the bridge, but I think we should have probably done that already.
So Ed, Mr. Chairman, where does this leave us?
Well, as I gather information, where it leaves us is, we've got to wait, we've got to wait to have findings, and then we've got to act on the findings. And we could actually do that prior to, in fact, I think we, this is where I'm, this is where I'm having trouble, because should we, should we not be able to downzone, go to a lesser zoning, I'm sorry, downzone might not be the term, but should we not be able to go to a lesser zone, then, and then we're going to have to republish and hold another public hearing on the zoning, and then we'll have to repub, then we'll have to publish a, good, then we'll have to publish a notice after that on the conditional use permit.
We would be able to cancel that altogether.
Here's my thought. If we're, if we're waiting for findings before we can even really truly dive down deep into this, I, I wouldn't be opposed to having a special meeting next week. If you guys can get the findings, we've already got the notice out, we come, we get together next week, we talk about it, and we make motions.
Because the publication is on the public hearing, not on the action that the commission takes. Let's let our city manager speak to this, so if you just identify yourself.
Yes, Chairman Landis. The purpose of the public hearing is to receive comment on the application, which, as you've been notified, would be actually recommended, a recommendation from staff to a less intensive use. So therefore, you've, for the purposes of a public hearing, satisfied that requirement for the application. Now, you won't be able to take action until obviously a formal recommendation has been rendered, and by best practices, we put all of that in writing and proceed from there. So the public hearing's been closed, now we have a different process that we'll follow, but we can certainly look at doing so either at your study session or at a special meeting if needed. But I just wanted to clarify that, that point of procedure and not really get into the calendar, because I'm not that familiar with it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So is anyone else, would anyone else be all right with a special meeting next week?
Special meeting next week?
Well, let's...
Would there be any value in having a special meeting?
It's been certain that staff has the findings for us to begin with.
Yeah, because all we're missing is the findings.
Right.
But here, but yeah, there's, if, if we don't have, the city commission historically has had a item to come before them, before they place it on the regular agenda twice. So we're going to need at least two study sessions after we have our meeting before it would appear on a city meeting.
So it's, it's not going to speed anything up, is what I'm hearing?
It's not going to speed anything up, but it does do, it does, it does actually accomplish something. So I like the recommendation to have a special meeting next week. Idea behind that would be for you to approve and consider whether you like to approve this as an R3 or as a less intense zoning as an R2. That would tell us that we need to require then an application for conditional use, that would still give them time to apply, we would then still be able to accomplish everything at a special meeting at the fourth Thursday in October. The timeline does work out for publication notice, all the things that need to occur, and get it all accomplished by the end of October with the planning commission. It still would go to the city commission. They could make it to them by the 15th. They would have two Mondays before the 15th, after that date, and so by November 15th, we would have a full...
And is that their first meeting in November?
No, it's November 1st.
Then we, then we need, then we need to back up our, then we need to have two special meetings. We need to have a special meeting for next week to approve the zoning so they can make their conditional, no, because of publication time, damn it. Sorry, didn't mean to cuss, but damn it.
It is, it is complicated with the timelines. I think this is, regardless of...
Is there any way we can get this on the city commission's November 1st commission meeting?
Let us take a look at that.
Okay.
Let us see if there's a way that we can do it with the timeline, with the meeting on the publication requirements. More, most importantly, would be to, if we wanted to set a special meeting for next week, or as soon as possible even, for you to make a determination. Regardless of whether the consultant is able to pull together the staff findings, we will make sure it's done before whatever date you set, regardless of the number of hours needed to get it done. And we will be able to make that determination, and then we will put together a calendar for you as to what needs to happen in order for that next, best, special meeting to occur to get that other hearing accomplished, should that be the direction you decide to go.
Does the staff have an idea on when the findings will be available?
Staff could, staff could generate findings just to meet the next week deadline. We don't have the timeline on the findings.
Well, I, I, what I hear from, and, and should we... From what I hear, the, the planning commission is amenable to having special meetings for both the rezon next week, and if possible, to move the timeline up on the city commission to have a special meeting, so the city commission has two study sessions before their November 1st meeting to discuss this. We're willing to do that.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
If the publication deadlines will allow us to do that.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Because I don't, I don't think the applicant should be put into a, into this position because our planning consultant hasn't finished their portion yet. So I think it's a special meeting, I think it's a great idea.
To the applicant, is that, that sounds like about the best we're going to be able to do. I hope you understand what we're...
I appreciate the spirit of what you all have expressed in trying to, to help us expedite as quickly as we can, since we did run into this roadblock today.
Yeah. Now, I would suggest that you check with your engineering firm and make sure these guys have traffic studies, anything they need in a timely basis, so, so we don't run into another hurdle.
And that's your next time.
That we needed a traffic study, and I've connected my traffic study engineer with Lucas, and I believe they've converged.
Okay, so, item number one is continued until next week, and you guys will do a special call meeting for us next week.
Need a motion for us to, for continuance?
Our table?
I think the, the request is you can just leave it open.
No, we closed that, we...
Close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing.
You would either table or continue the two items, the acceptance of the findings that's presented, which haven't been presented yet, so it's an open item, and also the approval or denial, because you would need the findings in order to make that determination.
I am open every, I'm open lunch and dinner every day next week, except I, no, I'm open for lunch and, or evening meeting every day. We've moved our, our council meeting to nine o'clock in the morning on Tuesday.
So do we need to actually motion to table?
Okay, he has a board meeting on Thursday, so Thursday at noon would be out.
Thursday, no, no, Thursday's fine.
Thursday would be fine.
Yeah, Thursday's fine.
Does anybody have any conflicts next week that, before we call a meeting, so we can make sure we have a quorum?
I think I can be available Thursday and Friday next week, but not before then.
Not before then.
Doesn't make a difference.
Said I don't have a calendar on me, I didn't bring my, I was looking to see if I could access it, but I...
Would you be, hopefully you'd be able to buy Zoom.
I would either via Zoom or be present here. I don't, I, I've had some changes in, yeah.
So, so we're talking Thursday, the 21st?
Yes.
Okay, same time?
Is that, Will, is that, does that work with my calendar?
I would prefer a lunchtime.
Okay. She's, they'll get us out, we, they've got our, they've got one word, can't be.
Make sure that, and you can all confirm.
Lunchtime.
So we're tabling? Do we need a motion to table?
We're just not taking action on it, so we're just gonna just be... be an open.
So we're just leaving it as it is?
Yeah, we're just going to leave it open. Okay, next item on the agenda is a public hearing for the planned unit development at 1426 East Wilson, Northeast Village, Richmond Circle Partnership, and the same applicant. So do we want to open this public hearing? I think we should just do the same thing we did with it, open it, you guys make a statement.
And we, we might leave it open.
Okay, again, what is the purpose of leaving the public hearing open? We had, we gave notice, there's no one here to oppose it, or to speak to it, other than the developer and staff, so why leave the public hearing open?
You would just be hearing comments on, on both, and we don't have, you don't have a presentation, but you're correct in that there's no public here to comment, other than developer, if he wants to add something, I think you would be.
I would think if we, if we had findings, and they were going to change, and we'd sent them out to the citizens, to people who got legal notice, then we might have to leave it open, but I don't think we need to leave it open for this.
And the PUD is not conditional upon the R2 or R3, correct? It's, the PUD is the PUD, okay.
And Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Are those three people online, or is it two people online? Can you confirm that?
There are consulting staff.
Okay, all right, okay.
All right, so the public hearing is open, and staff, do you have anything to say on this public hearing?
Again, the presentation that you all reviewed in the study session is available online, and staff looks forward to having a whole, our commission to make on, on.
This is the.
Do you, would you like to cover just the basics of the development itself?
Well, I think we've covered.
We've covered, we've covered that.
I think, we've covered that pretty much.
Uh huh. We did.
All right, very good.
Yeah, I think, does the.
Do you have questions?
Do you have any questions for the applicant, concerning the public hearing? Not, not necessarily, because we will have questions when we actually have a document in front of us to look at, I'm sure, so. Hearing none? I will close that public hearing, and we would recommend to staff that they look at the calendar, and count backwards from the November 1st meeting, and see if there's a way that we can have two, two Monday study sessions, and a publication, and a special meeting between now and the 1st of November, to accomplish getting it on the city commission's calendar for the 1st of November. Okay? Everybody agree with that?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think we're done.
Have a good evening.
You too. Number three is election of officers, and it says here, vice chair takes over the meeting. Quickly.
Really? All right, so we are going to, and we discussed this in our study session, and do we, do we still need to motion, or since it, since we took an early vote in the, in the study session, we, that, is that considered as something, the same thing as coming out of committee, or are we going from scratch?
I think you have to start from scratch.
Okay.
To make nominations.
Okay.
And then move through the election for each of the two positions.
All right, so, so since the vice chair has the gavel, all right, we're going to elect a chairperson, so I'll entertain nominations. And in the study session, it was the vice chair that did all the nominations, but he has the gavel, so it's not going to happen. I'll entertain some nominations.
I would nominate Cal Landis to continue on as chair.
We have Commissioner Cal Landis has been nominated. Anyone else?
I'll second.
You second? Are there any other nominations? First, before we decide.
Just accepting nominations.
Yeah, yeah.
Then you'll lose nominations, and then.
And any other nomination? Hearing none? Is there, is there a second on the nomination of Commissioner Cal Landis as chair?
Yes.
Second? All right. There's no need for discussion here, I don't think, you know, right?
I'm sorry, did Commissioner Crowley motion?
Yes.
He's the motion.
Yeah, Commissioner Crowley motioned.
So we needed an additional motion on top of the nomination?
No, a motion to have, so motion to have the nomination seize, is what I need, I'm sorry.
All right, well, I make a motion to cease nominations?
Brian, second, anyone who's second now?
Yeah, second.
All who's in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Then motion to now elect chairperson. So we've had, Mr. Cal Landis has been nominated, so I'll.
Oh, motion to elect Cal Landis for chairperson?
We have a motion, any second?
I'll second.
Second? All right, all who's in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Mr. Cal Landis is hereby elected as chair to continue. All right.
I'm just glad Cal didn't vote that he was opposed.
Cal, Cal thought about it.
Here'd have been just one vote.
After, after tonight, I was thinking, who can I lay on?
Here'd have just been one vote.
Okay, so, moving, moving along, we have a motion to elect, we, we have a nominations for the vice chairperson. I'd open the floor for nominations for vice chair.
I nominate Dr. Regis Wanika.
Oh, really?
Yes, sir.
Any more nominations? Hearing none, nominations are closed? The train runs both ways out of our station. So we need a motion to close the nominations.
I motion to close.
There's a motion and a second, write it either way you want to. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we need to have a motion now to approve the election of Dr. Regis Wanika as vice chairperson for the Ottawa City Planning Commission. Is there a motion?
So moved.
And there's a second? Write it either way you want it. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations.
On that side, from now on, what I would like to be referred to as His Royal Highness.
All righty, commissioner comments? We've had a few already. Do we have anything that's actually germane to the meeting?
Yeah, I will say that I will be out of the country October 7th through the 18th. So if that is in the window of the special meeting, and, and I'm the only one gone, no big deal, but if there are more than myself, then.
I will be out of the country October 6th to the 12th. We won't be in the same country.
But we'll still have, that'll still give us four.
As long as everyone else is available.
And we might have a fifth by then, we might have a replacement.
Actually, I'm out, I have fifth and sixth.
Out of the country as well?
No, just the state.
Fifth and sixth will not work then, so for special meetings, you might make a note of that. So.
The fifth, the, the, the fifth, if it's lifetime on the fifth, will work for me. I leave on the 6th.
Okay. And hopefully we'll have a nomination, and have a new commissioner by then, so, don't know that we will, but we might, and if we do, we can still look at that and see if we're going to have a quorum, so we can keep this expedited. Any other commissioner comments? Hearing none, the next regularly scheduled planning commission study session will be held Thursday, September the 28th, 2023, and the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting will be held Wednesday, October 11th, 2023, at 7:00 PM.
Are we adding in the 21st, or no?
They're going to look at the calendar.
They'll send us out another. No other business to come before us, I'd accept a motion to adjourn.
I mo, I move, Mr. Chair, that we adjourn.
Is there a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?